Good evening, everybody. Seven o'clock, let's make a start. Long time no see for quite a few of us. Agenda item one, Chair's Announcements. Before the meeting starts, I have a few announcements to make. Emergency evacuation procedures. In the case of a fire, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately following the green fire exit signs out to the assembly points, which is by the War Memorial on Duke Street. If anyone requires assistance, please let me know. Note, lifts should not be used. Please remain at the assembly points and do not attempt to return into the building until you have been advised to do so. Facilities, toilets are situated on the landing, at the top of the main staircase, and on the ground floor in the customer service centre. Please turn off your mobile phones. Note the filming of this meeting. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but I should point out that only members, there's only the councillors, officers, and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure the cameras are pointed only in this direction. Note, this meeting is being broadcast via YouTube and recorded. When speaking, please, may I remind the committee to ensure that you turn on your microphone and speak closely into it. A red light will appear on the middle button indicating that your microphone is switched on. When finished speaking, please remember to turn your microphone off. Agenda item two, apologies for my absence.
I haven't had any.
Thank you. Agenda item three, declarations of interest. Do we have any declarations of interest?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to declare an interest in item seven on the agenda, please. I was chair of the steering group which allocated this particular site in the Danbury neighbourhood plan, therefore I will leave the meeting after item six.
Thank you, councillor Dobson. Agenda item four, minutes. Are we happy to approve the previous minutes from the 2nd of September? So agreed, thank you very much. Item five, public question time. We have received one public statement for this evening's meeting for item seven. This will be taken when we cover that item, item six will come first. So, we also have a green sheet for this meeting. There were two updates, one came out about 3.40. Has all the committee read through those? If not, I'm happy to wait a few minutes. All good, thank you. Moving on to agenda item six. Twenty-five slash zero zero nine five three slash full, tennis court south-west of changing rooms, Oakland's Park, Molsham Street, Chelmsford. May I ask the planning officers to introduce the reports? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The application is brought before the committee as one neighbour representation was received and the site is a council-owned asset. The application site, outlined in red on the image above, is the tennis courts within the south-west part of Oakland's Park and the south-west of Oakland's House. It is within the Chelmsford urban area and the New London Road Conservation Area, which is marked by the yellow dotted line. The site is a rectangular shaped parcel of land which contains three tennis courts. A children's playground is to the east of the site. There is a residential flat block which overlooks the tennis courts to the south-west and a residential dwelling, Briar House, adjacent the north-west boundary. The proposal is for the installation of floodlights to the north-west and south-east boundaries with some minor additional fencing works and associated electrical infrastructure. The existing site boundaries consist of mainly brick walls and some metal fencing. The proposed floodlights would be installed at a height of approximately 2.75 metres on the boundaries and they would extend a length of approximately 36 metres across. The lights are designed to project light onto the tennis court and limit light spillage away from the intended area. Currently, the tennis courts are used in the summer evenings, however, they're not being used in winter. The proposed floodlights would enable the continued use of the tennis courts over the winter months as light levels diminish. Referring to the presentation slide above, the yellow line indicates the approximate position of the proposed floodlighting. The residential flat block to the south-west boundary overlooks the tennis courts and Briar House is adjacent the north-west boundary, behind the high-level brick wall with some hedging. The impact of the proposal is considered to have an acceptable relationship with these neighbours. I conducted a site visit to a tennis court in Ingetstone which has the exact same floodlights in operation. The images above are taken from my site visit and they demonstrate the limited illumination to surrounding residential properties and the minimal light spillage directly behind the floodlights. It is worth noting, the same floodlights in use at Ingetstone Tennis Club are in operation with minimal screening, whereas the application site benefits from more screening with the brick walls and vegetation. The proposed floodlights are considered to have a compatible relationship with surrounding neighbours. To secure their appropriate use, a planning condition is recommended to restrict the use of the floodlights after ten o'clock in the evening. This is in line with hours of use for other floodlights at tennis courts within the urban Officers have considered the impact of the proposal on the amenity of the neighbours and consider it acceptable. The proposal raises no other concerns and it would positively support the continued use of the sport and leisure facility in a sustainable location. The application is recommended for approval.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions before I open up to the committee. It states that the fencing will be three metres high. How high is the fence that is being replaced? So how much in addition is this?
So it's only the Palisade fencing that's being renewed and that is 1.7 metres tall? Is it 1.7? Two, 2.7, sorry. Tiny writing.
Three metres.
Three metres tall. So there's no change in, in, in the height there.
Okay. Yes, another question would be with regards to the gates. How is that going to be controlled? How are we going to avoid people going into the park when that gate is going to be operated after park opening times?
Yes, as you'd be aware with Oakland's, it's one of our parks that is locked during the, the dark hours in, in, in winter. But this would be an arrangement between the parks team and the operator of the tennis club. And the tennis operators would have the, the ability to open the gates for their, for their pupils, so that those people could park in the, in the existing car park. And then the tennis coach would then be responsible for locking the gates when the tennis coaching has finished. But it's obviously a private arrangement between our parks department and the tennis coach involved.
Thank you. Final question, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask anyway. Are these going to be on from dusk till 10pm regardless, or are they only going to be switched on when the courts are being used?
I would hope that they're only going to be switched on when they're, when they're used. I don't think that the intention is they'd be on and no one was playing.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions. I will open this up to the committee. Any questions from anybody? I'll give you 30 seconds to think of it while I scroll down my screen. So, if there are no questions, queries or comments on this application, I move that application twenty-five slash zero zero nine five three slash full, tennis court south-west of changing rooms, Oakland's Park, Molsham Street, Chelmsford to be approved. Subject to the conditions detailed on pages fifteen to sixteen of the agenda pack, do I have a second hour? Councillor Dobson, thank you. Will all those in favour of approving the application, please raise their hand. That appears to be unanimous, thank you. So I confirm that this application has been approved. Thank you all. Moving, sorry. Moving on to agenda item seven, councillor Dobson, if you want to leave, thank you. slash out, land south of Maldon Road and east of Hyde Green, Maldon Road, Danbury, Chelmsford. Councillor Dobson has declared an interest and left the room. May I ask the planning officer to introduce their report to the committee? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So this application has been, is being presented to committee as it has been called in by councillor Armstrong. He wished that, he wanted the committee to consider the crossing of the A414 and amendment to the speed limit to the junction to the east. So this is a site that's partly allocated within the Danbury neighbourhood plan and this is a plan taken from the Danbury neighbourhood plan. There is five sites that are allocated and we are referring to site B, which is the largest of the five sites. The site is also within the Chelmsford local plan and, which says that within Danbury, adjacent to the defined settlements, they would allow around 100 dwellings, but that the details would be set out within the Danbury neighbourhood plan. This is the wider area of the site. The site is in the bottom right-hand corner of your screen and it shows that there's free triple SIs within proximity to the site. And the Danbury Conservation Area is, is to the west of the site, about 100 and quite away from the site. There is a blue line that's also on the right-hand side of the screen, that's, which is the, the boundary of Chelmsford City Council area with Maldon District Council area. There is a small portion of the site that is within the Maldon District Council area, which is the small red section right in the bottom there. And for that reason, the application has been submitted to both Chelmsford City Council and Maldon District Council. Maldon District Council, because the majority of the development is situated within Chelmsford City Council, has devolved decision-making powers to Chelmsford City Council. So today, members, you will be making a decision based on both Chelmsford's application and Maldon's application. This is closer to the site, so it shows that there is a public right-of-way that's running through the site. Again, you can see that boundary between Maldon and Chelmsford City Council and there are some preserved trees along the western boundary, backing on to Hyde Green and at the property Little Hiron's, which is on Cherry Garden Lane. As you can see, there is the Maldon Road to the north and there is Cherry Garden Lane also to the north that joins on to Maldon Road. This is the parameter plan of the proposal. It is intended to divert Cherry Garden Lane and create a new junction on to Maldon Road. The Cherry Garden Lane junction with Maldon Road would be closed and development would be directed through the new junction or Maldon Road. There are two parcels of residential development proposed on this parameter plan, which is in that beige colour. There is a kind of, two yellow kind of areas that kind of go down, which are for drainage. So they would direct drainage as part of the sustainable drainage strategy to the ditches, which are to the south. There are, the two green sections are inter internal roads that they're proposing to connect the two residential parcels and the yellow section would be, the main yellow section would be for open space, which would be play provision, footpaths, drainage and landscaping. So this is a more zoomed-in version of the parameter plan and it sets out the criteria of the Danbury neighbourhood plan. So the Danbury neighbourhood plan expects around 65 new homes to be provided on site, a new junction with the A414, a diversion of Cherry Garden Lane, bus stops and associated crossing point, integration into the edge of the village setting, protect the existing trees and hedges, strong landscape buffers to the north, west, south and east. The landscape buffer to the west is protect that preserved trees and the residents that are there to the west. The buffer to the north is to create, to continue the rural character of the village of Danbury and the one to the east and the south is also to enable that rural buffer. There's also requirements to provide pedestrian cycle connections, on-site open space and road network improvements, education, library facilities and healthcare. So this is an outline application with all matters reserved apart from access, so we have a detailed access plan. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about each section separately because it's a bit hard to see because it's quite a big plan here. So the first section I'm going to talk about is the section to the right where you can see those two black circles. That's where the proposed crossing would be with tactile paving. So this is a more zoomed-in version where you can see where those two crossing points are, where the bus stops will be. They will create a new footpath on the southern side of Maldon Road. At the moment, there is none from Cherry Garden Road, but going eastwards, they will create a new footpath there and they would widen the footpath on the northern side to enable access to that bus stop on the northern side. On the left-hand side, here we can see that they've, they've realigned Cherry Garden Lane and where it's going to be diverted into that main access road. You can see that Cherry Garden Lane is going to be closed to traffic, but there would be a footpath retained. Crossovers would be provided to ensure that the properties that currently access Cherry Garden Lane can still access their properties. The diverted Cherry Garden Lane will have measures to reduce the attractiveness of the use of this lane with the raised crossing of the public, for the public right-of-way to go across the road and reducing in the width of the road. This is an indicative illustrative plan of how the development could be provided with the 65 dwellings. And you can see there with the, the green edge on the western side, which is where those TPO trees are. The proposal will include 35% affordable housing, the highway works is discussed, and buffing structure and a, and a contribution to, to expand the services, bus services along that route, second congestion route, a contribution towards healthcare, a contribution towards primary school and secondary school transport as, as requested by Essex County Council, open space, tree planting and play space, allotments contribution and money towards rams and the Danbury Country Park. In conclusion, the site is allocated within the Danbury neighbourhood plan, the principal access is acceptable, it complies with our adopted policies and the recommendation is approval subject to conditions and completions of section 106. You will notice that on the green sheet, there are amendments to a couple, to free conditions and that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much. I understand we have a member of the public that would like to speak on this application, Mr Weaver. There's a microphone there, hopefully it's switched on. Do you want to come down to the room in front and press the, I'm not sure which button it is, on those ones, the one in the middle?
Can everyone hear me now? This application seeks outline planning permission for the erection of up to 72 dwellings on the edge of Danbury, of which 25 will be affordable. Since 2018, Richborough have worked closely with Danbury Neighbouring, Neighbourhood Plan Steering Group, culminating in the site's allocation for housing in the made Danbury neighbourhood plan. The site is therefore deemed to be suitable for development and the application is in accordance with the adopted development plan. The council is unable to demonstrate a five-year housing land supply and the tilted balance is therefore engaged. In considering the tilted imbalance, the following clear benefits weigh in favour of granting consent. It would deliver a policy-compliant 35% affordable housing, it would provide a range of house types and sizes, it would deliver improvements to the route and usability of a public right-of-way through the site, it would provide formal and incidental open space that achieves at least 10% biodiversity net gain, it would generate jobs during the construction period and the creation of additional expenditure in the local area once occupied. The applicant has also agreed to several significant financial contributions, including towards healthcare facilities, education and allotments. The submitted layout and parameter plan show how the site can be developed whilst retaining all existing trees and hedgerows on site, with the exception being those required to, to be removed to facilitate access. The layout respects neighbouring land uses and will ensure adequate separation distances are achieved with adjacent properties. The diversion of Cherry Garden Lane through the application site will ensure safe access for existing and proposed residents. The access design incorporates a narrowing of the road and a raised pedestrian crossing, thereby acting as a deterrent to drivers using the route as a cut-through to avoid traffic on Maldon Road. The applicant has worked with the council to address all technical consultancy responses and in conclusion, the proposed development respects the policies of the Danbury neighbourhood plan and accords with the adopted development plan. It will provide much-needed affordable and market housing in a sustainable location whilst delivering a range of benefits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. In councillor Armstrong's absence, could I ask the officer to repeat for the committee his reasons for calling this in and why officers believe that those reasons aren't valid, for want of a better word? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so councillor Armstrong sought to call this application to committee to consider the crossing of the A414 and the amendment to speed limit to the junction to the east. In terms of the crossing, it's a drop curb crossing with tactile paving. It was decided that this was the most appropriate crossing and the highways authority agree due to the level of usage of the crossing that's likely to, to come. And the speed limit will be extended to the east to cover the bus stops, but it won't go any further east than that. It was felt that it was unnecessary to go further east.
Thank you very much. I will open this up to the committee. Any questions from the committee? Councillor Hall.
Thanks, Chair. Sort of knowledge of Danbury, my only concern is the volume of traffic that, that runs through it and frequent traffic jams. I appreciate 72 houses, but in terms of, you know, the, looking at the traffic volume and particularly as we now know the A12, which is linked to Danbury, although further, further down, it's not going to be expanded, can you just sort of comment on your satisfaction and comfort with, with the level of traffic that's, that's going to be introduced there to, to Danbury?
Emma Featherstone is here from the highways authority, so she can address your comment.
So we have reviewed the transport assessment that was submitted with the planning application and as you say, it's 72 houses and we can only look at making sure that development's impact is mitigated. And actually, in traffic terms, 72 houses doesn't generate a massive amount, so we haven't, we can't have an objection to it. They've, they've, they've done the necessary assessments and it is acceptable. Okay.
Thank you. Councillor Highlands.
Thank you, Chair. There was a couple of parish councils that also raised the issue of traffic, so they would have greater local knowledge than I. Did that get fully answered in the officer's response, that the objections were raised about the traffic movements? And the, there was also an issue raised about the flooding arrangements by Essex County councils. Has that been fully answered?
Would you like us to come back on the roads question and then we'll go back to the flood one?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not particularly sure what the parish council's actually raised, but as I said, the highway authority has looked at the transport assessment that was submitted, we've checked it and it is acceptable, so we can't really do any more than that.
Just to, just to read from the parish council's commentary, it says severely impacted by the additional traffic making an already busy road more difficult. You're saying that's not true?
I appreciate the traffic levels through Danbury, you know, they're not without their problems, but this development is for 72 houses and when you put the, the traffic generated, when you estimate the traffic generated by the 72 houses on to the network, it has a minimal impact. So there's nothing we can ask the developer to mitigate because they're not actually causing a massive issue. Okay? And, and so they would have done an assessment of the actual, the development access works fine in terms of the, the generation of the trip generation from the development, so that's all we can assess.
Thank you. Chair, I have a question. Cut, sorry, come back on the flooding question?
Yes, of course. Yes, so it's in flood zone one, so it's not, it's at the lowest risk of flooding in terms of the Environment Agency. And the application is originally submitted, there was an objection from the lead local flood authority in terms of surface water drainage, water, and information was submitted that addressed those objections. So now the lead local flood authority has no objection, subjective conditions which are, have been attached to your recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Lodge, your hand was next, I will come up, come back to you.
Thank you. I, and forgive me because this is possibly in the information we've already had, what is the speed limit of the area where people are going to be crossing the road to get to the bus stop? Because I wondered if that was part of councillor Armstrong's concern, that if it's quite a fast road, will we be able, be able to make that crossing safely? Or does something else need to be going place for that to happen? Thanks.
So currently, that section of the 414 is restricted, 60 miles an hour, and it comes into a 40 just by the junction to Cherry Garden Lane. The, this access proposal proposes to move the 40 mile an hour, so extend it out, so it encompasses the bus stops and also the visibility displays for the access. So it would be 40. We can't justify, we obviously have a, a speed management policy we have to accord to, and I know there's been some talk about dropping it down to 30, but it goes into a 40. There's no justification, certainly on this bit, there's no frontage along there, so we, we couldn't justify putting it to a 30, but a 40 is acceptable. It's gone through a road safety audit of that design and, and no issues were raised, no concerning issues were raised, so we're happy with it.
Councillor Tron.
Thank you. Apologies, I'm still not clear what councillor Armstrong's objections were. Could you just clarify that for me? Thank you.
At one point, the Danbury Parish Council was asking for a signalised crossing and I think councillor Armstrong was also wanting to have more of a formal crossing in terms of like a pelican crossing.
Sorry, to clarify, what crossing is this? This is a...
It's a drop curb crossing with tactile paving.
Okay, so it's not, not even a zebra crossing, sorry. Right, okay. I missed that on the report. Councillor Papa.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, officers. Every little thing's add, that's, you know, so I understand that it's only 72 dwelling, but then it's already says the heavy traffic, so every time there's little that's been added to the traffic, it's going to be massive, right? And it's already a heavy traffic. So who actually takes responsibility or where is that threshold to say, okay, now we can't anymore have any more houses or we've got to do something about the traffic? Can you give me some understanding about it?
Unfortunately, the, the position we're in at the moment, we, Chelmsford have to have a, a housing supply. We, we need, we need the housing, the government are telling us to have housing. We have a transport assessment, if there's a severe impact, then we can sort of say we need mitigation, but it's, it's this definition of severe impact and we have real trouble. You know, we, we try and secure as much as we can in mitigation terms, but there is, literally, we, we can't ask them to, we can't prevent, in, in highway terms, we can't say no to this application because there is not a severe impact on the network. I, I do appreciate the congestion levels and, you know, it's, it's not just Danbury, it's, it's across the city, there is congestion, but unless we can demonstrate a severe impact and there isn't a severe impact here, unfortunately.
Can you talk about the severe impact? Thank you, I mean, thank you very much. What is actually a severe impact?
Subjective. That, that's, that's the problem we've got, it's not defined anywhere. It's, you know, but in our experience, it's, if we take things to a... It's, you know, but in our experience, it's, if we take things to appeal, they get allowed anyway. So, we have to, you know, we, there, there is mitigation in this. You know, we are getting money towards bus services, we are trying to encourage sustainable travel, but in, in terms of congestion, there's very little we can do on a, on a development of seventy-two houses.
Can I just come in there as well? I just wanted to cover the point that this is an allocated site for sixty-five dwellings. So, in terms of that, the, the Danbury neighbourhood plan is already accepting that they propose that sixty-five dwellings can go on this site.
councillor Tron.
Thank you, thank you. So to go back to the crossing, have we got any recent examples of similar situations whereby there is a new development that's coming in and the crossing that has been proposed presumably by the developer has been considered to not be sufficient, also when you take into account a forty mile an hour road and potentially there has been a change to the, the type of crossing? Just for, I, I live on channels and so I've got a lot of experience of two crossings coming in over the last few years. Forty mile an hour roads, we've got White Hart Lane, we've also got regiment, Essex Regiment Way and I feel from a safety perspective that the fact that they are pelican crossings actually stop the traffic, I'd be much more comfortable with that concept considering, you know, it's a forty mile an hour road and there are going to be people, people crossing the road presumably quite regularly and bearing in mind, we do want to encourage sustainable travel, we do want to encourage children walking to school, walking to the health centre, which was referenced, or the health provision. I'm, I'm just interested to understand whether they're, you know, what, what's, what's the, the test for what type of crossing and whether we have got any conditions that we can apply regarding that? Thank you.
So, we, we've sort of been in discussion with the, with the applicant about the, the type of crossing and to be fair, there, there is, apart from the bus stop, there is no destination on the other side of the road, so we can't justify a signalised crossing. And I'd, I'd appreciate the examples you've given, channels, it's a very different situation. This, this example, you've, you've got destinations like that, the health centre is on the southern side of the four one four. So, literally, it's just a bus stop. Yes, we do want to encourage sustainable travel, but it, it's a balance. It's a lot, it's significant infrastructure to put in for a crossing that realistically isn't going to be highly used and actually that can then have negative, negative effects. If, if drivers get used to knowing that crossing is never called and it never changes, if it does change, the, the, there's an expectation, well, there's no expectation of it changing, so that then leads to safety concerns. So, on balance, just a drop curb crossing would be acceptable here for the sort of low level of movements across to the bus stops.
councillor Tron.
Thank you for that clarity, that's really, really helpful. We do need housing in Chelmsford and the fact that there is the thirty-five percent allocation of affordable housing and it's on a site that's previously been allocated, I personally don't have any issue with the development overall. But it's really good to get that clarity around the crossing because, appreciate different examples in different areas, but on the face of it for me, I felt as though I was looking at potentially a similar situation, so thank you.
Thank you. councillor Hall.
Yeah, was it ever considered to, I know it's the bus stops and maybe it's just the way it's, it's on this map, but they're, they're in the road and it's a busy road. Was it ever considered to drop those into a lay-by on both sides?
It's not Essex County Council's policy to put lay-bys in on this category of road because once a bus is, is into the lay-by, it's, then it needs to be let out and that's not prioritising sustainable travel. So actually, the policy is to have the buses stop on the road to the detriment of, of the vehicles, so they have to have, sit behind it, but it does encourage sustainable travel. So that, that is, that's the reason why they're on, on Carriageway and not in lay-bys.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments or queries from the committee? councillor Foscona.
Thanks for that information about the crossing, I was concerned about that too. I just wondered whether Natural England has received the, the information that they requested and the extra details of mitigation that they feel were missing in the submission.
Yes, sure, I can take that. And so, the original ecological impact assessment didn't fully consider the impact upon those triple SIs, which I showed you on an earlier slide. And that's why we originally had an objection from Natural England because they said that local residents were going to go and use those triple SIs and they weren't mitigating that impact and they weren't considering it. So we received an amended ecological impact assessment, which proposes a walking route on site and a walking route off-site as a suitable alternative natural space. And for, so residents could have two potential routes that they could use when they're walking and their dogs and walking about. And also that this would be promoted to residents with, with an information board on site and through leaflets. Dog bins would be provided on site and that site off, that route off-site, signage would be updated and dog bins would be provided. There is also a promotion of the Danbury Country Park to encourage residents to go to Dan, if they're going to get in the car or go for a longer walk, they would go to Danbury Country Park rather than the triple SIs and that would be in the residents' information. And that's why there is a contribution towards Danbury Country Park in terms of maintenance, in terms of any additional wear and tear from those additional visitors.
Thank you, thank you. I, I thought, I mean, I might have been reading it wrong, but I got the impression that even after they'd received the extra, that information, that they still felt that there weren't, there were questions that hadn't been answered.
And the most recent consultation response said that they were happy provided that mitigation was provided.
Oh, good, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions? No? Okay. I move that application twenty-four slash zero one seven eight six slash out, land south of Maldon Road and east of Hyde Lane, of least, east of Hyde Green, Maldon Road, Danbury, Chelmsford be approved, subject to completion of a section one oh six agreement together with compliance with the conditions detailed on pages forty-four to fifty-two of the agenda pack. The details of those items and any variations that may be considered necessary and appropriate to be delegated to the director of Sustainable Communities, including any officer within the director holding an appropriate onward delegation from him in consultation with the chair and vice-chair of the planning committee and the amendments on the green sheet. Do I have a second hour? councillor Tron, thank you. Will all those in favour of approving the application please raise your hand? Thank you, that looks in, yeah, okay, so that application has been approved. Thank you very much. Uh, agenda item eight, planning appeals, have a look through them. We've got those pesky signs on the high street with the, we keep losing against, but other than that, I think we're looking okay. I consider the meeting closed at seven thirty-seven. Thank you all.